Time up at all?
Here we go.
I think it's as high as it can go, though.
Yeah, you either need to speak up or use headphones.
Yeah, speak up, okay. I do so, talk so.
Okay, it is now 5:00 PM. The Revere Zoning Board of Appeals meeting will now come to order roll call.
Roll call the members of the zoning board of appeals, Mr. Bucili. Here, Mr. Lemina.
Here.
Here, Mr. Lopes.
Here.
Here, Mr. Pelton.
Here.
Here, and Mr. Tucker.
Here.
Here, a quorum is present. Application on the agenda is A-20-26, application of Delmi Lemus and Carlos Garcia, 951 Revere Beach Parkway, seeking minimum, seeking variances for minimum side yard setback requirements for lots greater than 6,000 square feet to enable the appellant to construct a 386 square foot addition at 951 Revere Beach Parkway.
Sean, you're just gonna have to unmute yourself?
Does that work?
Yes.
Good evening.
You're very long.
Madam Clerk, my name is Sean Donahue, I represent the applicants, Delmi Lewis and Carlos Garcia. As you may remember, when we last met, there was an issue, has been an issue concerning an easement that runs through the property. I have spoken with the city engineer as recently as Monday. And I think we, we have come to a resolution in connection with the easement. So what I'm asking for is, is the opportunity to address the easement. Essentially, what they're looking to do, want us to do is come up with a site plan that, in which the two lots are laid out into a single lot, since they're currently both held in common ownership. And also, Mr., the, the city engineer, Mr. Eystrom, wanted us to delineate the area in which the pipe will be the new location of the piping. So I don't expect that to take long. I would expect to have it done by the next meeting. I'm asking respectfully if we could just have further continuance until the next regularly scheduled meeting of the zoning board of appeals, and we'll waive whatever time tolls between now and that, that period of time.
Ashley, is that okay to do?
That's okay, we'll just see, just a brief, you know, email request in, in writing to the board, Mr. Donahue, Attorney Donahue.
I'll get that to you.
Okay.
What's the wish of the members? Is there a motion to continue?
Yeah, I continue.
Seconded by John Lobes, all in favor? Aye.
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 Unanimous for all the members?
Thank you very much, appreciate it.
You. Our next meeting would be, will be on the 24th, Ashley, is that February?
Yes, the 24th at 5:00 PM.
February, I take, correct?
Yes.
What at 5:00 PM? Next calendar item number?
Next calendar item number, application A-20-29 on the application of Abdelhamid Ben Karain of 33 Cambridge Street, seeking minimum parking space dimensions to enable the appellant to convert a single-family dwelling to a two-family dwelling at 33 Cambridge Street, Revere, Mass.
Is the applicant present?
Yes. How you doing, guys?
Okay, and I'll ask, if the continuation, I believe that you were going to speak to the ward counselor, and you had to do something else. Can you just brief us on what your updates are?
Yes, they, they sent me a denial. They denied me, you know, the, the, you know, the plot plan that I submitted, they denied, you know, that, that plan. And I come up with another one, which I have right here. If you could see it. What I'm trying, what I'm gonna do is, it's, you could see the two cars here and two here. I'm gonna close the exit here, I'm gonna put it here.
Okay, have you submitted the plot plan, sir, to us, a certified plot plan with that new?
No, I haven't, you know, I just, I just, you know, I was diagnosed with COVID, you know, 19, I couldn't leave, I couldn't do anything. I just finished, you know, my, my confinement, you know, today.
Okay, so do you wish to continue until you can submit that, a certified plot plan with these new requests?
Yes, please.
And that would be more than less, I'm not looking at that, it's probably front yard parking, so you'd have to ask for a variance for front yard parking?
That's correct.
I'm not sure how to read that, am I right, Ashley?
Um, I honestly, I, I'm not gonna be able to tell Chairman until I receive the denial letter and a certified plot plan. Regardless, there might be a need for re-advertising because only minimum parking size dimensions were, were advertised, not for front yard parking, and this is a different plan.
Yeah, I believe so.
Mike, did he already make it from site planning?
I thought he went to the site planning, Michael, I thought you sent him the last time.
Yes, but I think he was denied, and now he's coming up with a new plot plan, but he has to depict what it's for, so if it's for front yard parking, then he would have to apply, reapply. Did Site Plan Review tell you anything, or did you go to them?
Yes, they told me that the, the, the front parking is, you know, 40% of it has to be in a green area. I'm not touching any of that green area, you know, it's, the way it is, is I can't park three cars in the front without touching any of the green area. So the 40% that they're talking about, it's, it's, it's been there as a 20% of it.
Okay, why don't you submit that plan, a, a new plot plan, cer-, a certified plot plan, to Site Plan Review for review, and then they will tell you what to do based on that, if you're coming back in front of the ZBA. I would offer a continuance on this, but I think this continuance is, is gonna be mute, because I think you're gonna have to reapply. It does appear that some of that is gonna be front yard parking. But again, we'll continue this if Site Plan Review states that it's not front yard parking, and I think we could continue this and go forward that way. Am I right, Ashley, what, what do you think?
I, it really depends on what Site Plan Review's letter says, if this is for, if he's requesting a different variance that hasn't been advertised, I'm not sure, I believe he's going to have to reapply.
Okay.
I think he sounds lost, Michael.
I, I, to be honest with you, I am, because, you know, the, the last plan that I submitted, I thought that I was all set.
Yeah.
Because, you know, I wasn't gonna touch any in the front. All I was trying to do is remove, you know, the, the, the set of stairs, and I was short, you know, one foot for each, you know, spot. And I'm not touching any of the green area in the front, it was, that's the way it was, and that's the way it's gonna be, and that's the way it's gonna stay. You know, all I'm doing is removing the set of stairs that you have in my initial plan that I submitted.
Yeah, unfortunately, you're, you're, you do not have a plot plan in front of us for us to look at right now with any changes that you're making, so you're gonna have to submit that, a new plot plan to Site Plan Review, to determine if you're coming back to the Board of Appeals.
Okay.
And I think you have.
But I believe, we, we could offer a continuance on this, but I truly believe you're more than likely gonna have to reapply for a variance, a new variance that they're gonna tell you.
Okay.
Alrighty.
Alright.
Mike, hold on, let him know that he needs a certified plot plan, not, not a drawing.
Right, I said certified plot plan, he's gonna have to present that to Site Plan Review.
Okay, alright, I will, guys, thank you.
You can't just draw it yourself, you're gonna have to get an architect to.
Yes, what I told you, the reason, you know, why, you know, I, I couldn't do it, and just.
Right.
But that's fine.
Glad you're, I'm, I'm glad you're okay.
Thank you very much, guys, I appreciate it, thank you.
I think we have to do a motion to continue this, but you probably will end up having to reapply with, based on what Site Plan Review tells you.
Okay, alright, I will.
Is there a motion to continue?
I can, yes.
Yes. I'll second it.
Seconded by, okay, all in favor? Aye, John raised his hand? Okay, Ashley, what about, Al, that's the only one?
Mr., Mr. Bucili, on the motion to continue the application for 33 Cambridge Street? Voting yes.
Okay, so all in favor?
Yes.
Alrighty.
Okay, thank you so much, guys.
You're welcome.
Good night.
Next item on the agenda is application A-20-30, the application of David and Margaret Mellon of 29 Dedham Street. The applicant is seeking minimum lot frontage, minimum side yard setback, maximum height, minimum landscaping, to enable the appellant to re-subdivide existing lots at 25 Dedham Street and part lot 92 at 29 Dedham Street into new proposed lots, one and lot two at 29 and 27 Dedham Street, to allow the appellant to construct a two-family dwelling on each of the new proposed lots.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, my name is Attorney Larry Simeoni, and I represent David Mellon and Margaret Mellon of 29 Dedham Street. May I proceed?
Yes.
So the applicants at the last meeting of December 16th, 2020, presented a request for a variance of the dimensional regulations 1724-10 and 1724-070 in the RB district, in order that they could create lots one and two, as shown on the original exhibit one, presented to this board, as well as to construct one two-family home on each of those dwellings, the first floor having a garage and 610 square feet, one bedroom, and the second floor being 1,176 square feet, and three bedrooms, with four off-street parking. The property, as I discussed with this board before, is 2529 Dedham Street, as shown on exhibit five, as I presented in the original application, a 1936 subdivision plan. 25 Dedham Street has 48-foot of frontage, 5,313 square feet, and is depicted on said plan, and then you have 29 Dedham Street has 32-foot of frontage and 2,687 square feet. It is improved by a single-family structure, both lots are in the RB district. 25 Dedham Street is currently vacant, wherein the home there was burnt and destroyed by fire in 2017. So as I told you briefly last time, is that these, after the destruction of the fire, Mr. Mellon passed away, and his children inherited it, he had three children, one is pretty much disabled, and cannot really function in any particular way, I have the two other siblings who are trying to move forward, try to develop the property, and they reached out to their longtime friend, who's their neighbor, Thomas Hill III. They actually grew up together, and Mr. Hill and his associate Mike Poleski, as Patriot Way Development are presently being, you know, the contractor that will assist the Melons to try to develop and sell the property. So essentially, they've asked for a re-subdivision as established in exhibit one, creating lot one and two, lot one and two each will have 40-foot of frontage and 4,000 square feet. And not, an approval not required plan would be then drawn, which would look exactly like exhibit one and presented to the Honorable Members of the Revere Planning Board for their endorsement, and the creation of those lots would be legally binding. So as you look at the request for the subdivision, we're asking essentially that the 80-foot requirement of frontage in the RB district be reduced to 40 feet, and we're asking that the minimum lot size be reduced from 8,000 feet to 4,000 square feet. As for the two-family dwellings thereon, we are asking for side yard setbacks, one side being five feet, the other one being 10 feet in the original drawing, that number 29 Dedham Street would be 32.8 feet in height, and number 25 Dedham Street be 34.7 feet in height. And finally, that there would be 35% in, in the front yard for landscaping. So when you look at, again, the relief requested, we're asking for a side yard of five feet when 10 feet is required. We're asking for a height variance when 30 feet is the max, and we're asking for a variance of the 40% landscaping requirement, presenting only 35. After the, the meeting, Mr. Chairman, we had with this honorable body in December 16th, 2020, we have revised exhibit number one, and has sent, have filed that with you, along with the plan and the building elevations. And my clients have, with the, their helpers and the developers there, Mr. Hill and Mr. Poleski, they've spoken to the abutters again, and they have attained a petition signed by all the abutters, which I presented to the board, as well as Councilman Keith. Essentially, the modification to exhibit one is that they moved the structures a little away, a little additionally away from each abutter, so where originally you looked at 33 Dedham Street on the left, and it had five feet as a set, yeah, side back, side yard requirement, as step forth, and then you looked at 21 on the right, and it had five feet with 20 somewhat feet in the middle. We've switched it around, so the revised exhibit one has 11 feet on each side that faces the abutters at 21 and 33 Dedham Street, and has 10 feet in, in, in the middle, having five-foot setbacks. So the same, the same variances we've asked for, we still continue to need and ask for, we'd ask you to consider allowing this particular revised exhibit number one and the variances that we've sought. Anybody having a question, I'd be more than glad to answer that, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, Larry, so you satisfied the woman that was opposed?
Yes, the, the lady at 21 Dedham Street, they met with her, they essentially made the modification to pull the structures away from her, and at the same time, where they were gonna benefit her by moving the structures around, they also decided to provide the same relief to the lady who owned 33 Dedham Street. And now we have all the immediate abutters having signed a petition that has been presented to you.
Yep.
And, and presented to the Ward Councilman.
Yep, I saw, I saw that.
Not sure if it come up, but that's the plan that you submitted, Larry, right?
Yes.
Okay. Alrighty.
Alright.
Is, seeing it's a public hearing, are there any proponents? Well, seeing the counselor, the Ward Counselor is here, Counselor Keith, do you wish to speak?
Sure, thank you, Mr. Tucker, I'm the Chairman Tucker. After, I have spoken to the neighbors, neighbors at length, and as mentioned, last meeting, all but one were very satisfied with the project, actually, they were very excited for it because of the current conditions of the property. And then the one that had some lingering concerns with the side of her house and some of the, actually, some of the greenscapes, which I'm, I'm under the impression, and everything's been resolved, she actually signed on the petition. So I'm glad that the developer and the attorney were able to work with the neighborhood, that's the most important thing, that's the only reason I'm here. You know, if it's my next-door neighbor, I wanna have lots of input, doesn't matter what I think, it matters with the person living next door, don't think so. And, but I'm just glad that they were able to work that out, and everyone should be happy.
Okay, thank you, are there any other proponents? There's no hand raised, anyone wish to speak? I don't see anything here. I will ask, close that side of the hearing, are there any opponents, anyone opposed? Seeing and hearing, no hand raised, I'll close that side of the hearing, any members wish to speak?
No, I, I think he satisfied the needs, and I was concerned about the person next door. I agree with Patrick has said about it, and it, it all looks good to me.
Okay, well, I commend the, the attorney and the developer for going forth and actually having the additional meetings and conversations. So I would like to put this to a roll call.
Yep.
Roll call Chairman on the, to grant the appellant the relief requested. Mr. Bucili. Mr. Bucili voting yes, Mr. Lemina.
Yes.
Voting yes, Mr. Lopes.
Yes.
Voting yes, Mr. Pelton.
Yes.
Voting yes, and Mr. Tucker.
Yes.
Yes, the variance shall be granted.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Next application is A-21-01, Robert Mahoney, 2 Paul Street, Revere, Mass, requesting a variance of minimum area of 8,000 square feet for proposed lot one, minimum rear yard setback of 30 feet for proposed lot one, and minimum rear yard setback for decks for proposed lot one, to enable the appellant to subdivide 149 Breedins Lane into proposed lot one comprising of 6,772 square feet, and proposed lot two comprising of 8,700 square feet.
Good evening, members.
Okay.
Can you hear me?
You're gonna have to speak up a little bit, but you're, you're very faint there.
Better?
Yes.
Okay, yes, that's, that's pretty explanatory what Ashley has mentioned in that statement. To subdivide the lot and asking for rear yard setback, setback for red deck and lot size for lot one.
Okay, seeing that this is a public hearing, I will ask if there's any proponents, anyone in favor? I do see that the Ward Counselor is here, I'm not sure if he wants to speak now, or after everyone, both proponents and opponents speak?
Sure, Mr. Chairman, you could see if there are proponents and opponents, and then I can speak.
Thank you, are there any proponents? Hearing and seeing none, I don't see any hands raised. Are there, we'll close that side of the hearing, any opponents, anyone opposed? Seeing and hearing now, I'll close that side of the hearing. Are there any members that wish to speak? I do have a few questions, I was up at that property. And basically, the current house that's there, the existing house, is there gonna be anything done to that?
Yes, there'll be work done on the, on the decking, some work to repair the deck, and, yeah, some upgrades, some painting, and some, yeah.
But the footprint or the height, nothing else is gonna change there?
No, the existing footprint size will all stay the same.
Okay, 'cause I was concerned that deck is very close to the abutter. And, but the abutter was notified at this meeting, so if there's no concerns for the abutter, that was my concern that I was looking at, and since that house is not being touched, there's be no challenge to taking that corner there with visibility or anything, 'cause you have the playground there, but that's still gonna be open space, the grass area?
All open space, nothing will be touched there.
Okay, any other members wish to speak? I just asked that the Ward Counselor have the, oh, Acklog, you have anything?
Yes, I think he's proposing the nine single-family dwelling on lot one, and that he said he, he confirms with zoning requirement, but there is no, any plan submitted for us.
I think it's just the subdivision, it's, it's a, it's a approval not required lot, which is 8,000 square feet, so I will have the 20-foot setback, 15-foot side yard setback, and I will have the 30 rear yard setback on that. I have to go to Planning Board after this to propose the home, but I will meet all setbacks required by state and local codes. It's a single-family home, comparable to some of the homes that I've built in that area already on Breedins Lane.
Does that answer your question, Acklog?
Yes.
He's coming in front of us, he's gonna, he's just asking, but he still has to go in front of the Planning Board, they'll, they'll vote and present, he'll present the plan to them.
Yes, that's correct, thank you.
Okay, Counselor Serino, do you wish to speak on this?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman, and through you to the members. I'm not really in support or against this proposal. I have not had any conversations with Mr. Mahoney before I saw this on the agenda. And I will say that in the late fall, right around the holidays, I did, or may have been right before the holidays, I did have two residents up in North Revere, not at this property, but in, in the vicinity of, of there, who, I guess Mr. Mahoney had been excavating without permits, and there were some issues, so I just wanna make sure that if this variance is granted, that everything is done with marking when he starts construction, and he follows all proper protocols therein after this, moving forward.
Okay, I, I'm taken back by that, because normally, we ask the, the applicants to make sure that they speak to the Ward Counselor. Do you wish to continue this, so you can have discussion with him, or do you feel comfortable enough for us to vote on it?
Actually, I, I, yeah, I think, I would like a, if, if we could do that, that would be great.
Okay.
Do you like to discuss it now, Mr. Serino?
Well, we're not gonna discuss it on the Zoom meeting here, 'cause we have a late the agenda. So I would ask if there's a motion to continue till February 24th at 5:00 PM, so that the applicant can have the opportunity to discuss this plan with the Ward Counselor.
You asking me that question?
Yep, I'm asking for a roll call firm.
Okay.
Yes, on my part.
Yes.
Ashley, can we have a roll call?
Sure. Yep, on the roll call to continue this matter until February 24th, Mr. Bucili.
Yes.
Mr. Bucili voting yes, Mr. Lemina.
Yes.
Voting yes, Mr. Lopes.
Yes.
Yes, Mr. Pelton.
Yes.
Yes, and Mr. Tucker.
Yes.
Yes, this application will be continued to the meeting of February 24th at 5:00 PM.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is application A-21-02, Stephen Caruso, seeking a variance for minimum frontage requirement of 150 feet to enable the appellant to subdivide existing lot 14 Charger Street into proposed new lot A, comprising of six acres with 75 feet of frontage on Charger Street, and proposed new lot B comprising of 2.6 acres with 75 feet of frontage on Charger Street.
Mr. Chairman, members of the Zoning Board of Appeals, my name is Attorney Larry Simeoni, Law Office is at 300 Broadway, Revere, Massachusetts. This evening, I represent RNS Realty Trust, Stephen R. Caruso trustee. May I go forward, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, most definitely, thank you.
The applicant seeks variance from the frontage requirement in the Ted District in accordance with the Revere Revised Zoning Law 1724-10, the Table of Dimensional Controls. The property, 320 Charger Street, is currently lot 14, it's 8.5 acres in the Ted District. It has two non-conforming structures thereon, and in two non-conforming uses that the board and the community is aware of, one being North Gate Recycling, a recycling facility with an ABC license from the state, granted by special permit in 1998 by the Honorable Members of the Revere City Council, and Caruso Construction Corporation, a road construction corporation that has been on the site since 1975. The lot itself, lot 14, is a compliant lot, it has frontage of 150 feet and has greater than 25,000 square feet for its lot size. The project that we're seeking is to seek a variance to divide the 150 feet of frontage. Essentially, we'd like to create lot one, which will be six acres, and lot B, I'm sorry, lot A, six acres, and lot B, 2.6 acres, as shown on exhibit one that I've submitted with the application. Should the grant be allowed for this variance, an A and R plan would be produced and put forward to the Revere Planning Board, where it would be endorsed and the lot would be created. Exhibit number one shows the 150-foot of frontage, and that's 150-foot of frontage on Charger Street. And as I said, 75 feet is shown for the proposed frontage for lot A and B. And you'll also see in reviewing the plan that there And you'll also see in reviewing the plan that there is a proposed easement. And the reason why there's a proposed easement is because you can't grant yourself an easement. So Lot A being owned by RNS and Lot B being owned by RNS cannot grant themselves an easement. But at the time that Lot A gets conveyed out to North River Corporation, who's the proposed buyer for Lot, the six-acre lot, then an easement would be established. If you look at Lot A in the design, you'll see that we go from 75-foot of frontage and we tail down to about 15 feet, and then that 15 feet goes along the property until it touches and meets the six-acre lot. The other lot, Lot B, has 75-foot of frontage, and then again, the driveway, if you will, tears down to about 44.41 feet. So the total driveway area being about 69 feet. But the key here is that in order that both parcels will have adequate and usable frontage and safe frontage, that easement will be put on right after the conveyance of Lot A to the proposed buyers. So Lot A, as we discussed with the Honorable Members of the City Council, is gonna be six acres. The first three acres will be developed and made ready for North River Company to begin allowing its tenant, Avis Renticon, to use the facility. We expect that to be done by July 1st, 2021. The second three acres in Lot A, we expect to have pad ready and Avis to use this lot on July 1st, 2022. Finally, Lot B, we expect to also be pad ready about that time, and a conveyance would be made from RNS to North River. And then North River would own the entire 8.5 acres and the tenant, Avis, would be operating a commercial auto storage facility as granted by a special permit from the Honorable Members of the City Council in December of 2020. This particular lot is anticipated to have 900 cars in storage. These would be 900 new cars that come in from the Port of Boston and are brought there by carrier and go into the lot. We expect that 1,500 cars will be at the lot, bringing approximately 3/4 of a million dollars in excise tax revenue. The lot will have 24/7 security, five employees, no public access, and operate from 8:00 AM to 8:00 PM. Chairman, if you have any questions, I'd be glad to answer them.
Thank you. I appreciate and wanna thank the actual owner of the property and yourself for taking the time, different times, to allow us to tour the property as well. Are there any proponents, anyone in favor? Hearing none, I'll close that side of the hearing. Any opponents? Anyone opposed? Hearing or seeing none, I'll close that side of the hearing. The Ward Counselor, do you wish to speak?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I am in support of this. I understand this is all part and parcel to the special permit that the City Council granted back in December, and I think this is going to be a good project. It's not residential, this is gonna bring excise tax to the city. It's gonna be a very minimal use on that lot, and Mr. Caruso has been great. But I think this, going to this use of a parking lot is actually going to be an improvement to the site of what's currently there. So for all those reasons, I am in support of this, this variance. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Are there any other counselors wish to speak? No? Okay.
I have my hand raised.
I don't see it. Okay. Tony, you were doing the same thing last, on Monday. That little hand is hard to see. Alrighty, go ahead, Tony. Counselor President Zambudo.
Thank you very much. I certainly support this project, so I probably should have spoke up as a proponent, but I'm in 100% support of this project. Thank you.
Thank you. It does take a little bit of getting used to doing this, Tony.
You're telling me?
Okay, any of the members, board members wish to speak? Hearing none, just.
Please, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Chairman, I believe that there's a letter from the record. I don't know if we actually got it in time from Mr. O'Brien.
You're in, you're muted.
I'm in no receipt of any letter from Mr. O'Brien.
They've done a good job on this, Mike, putting this together.
Yes, I think it's very good.
Yeah, I'm agreeing with you, what you just said about, you know, they're doing a good job making sure that and also the city's gonna be collecting some, some funds on that as well.
All right, I'm just looking right now to see if anything was sent. I don't see anything that was sent, so. So we, I would just ask for a roll call, please.
Shall the board grant the relief requested by the applicant? Mr. Bucili. Voting yes. Mr. Lemina.
Yes.
Voting yes. Mr. Lopes.
Yes.
Yes, Mr. Pelton.
Yes.
Yes, Mr. Tucker.
Yes.
Voting yes. This application has been granted.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, members.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next application on the agenda is A 2103, Pasquale Barcino, 410 Broadway, Lynnfield, Mass., requesting a variance with respect to maximum grade requirement of 8% for unenclosed parking areas to enable the appellant to exceed an 8% as-built slope of a completed driveway in connection with the construction of two townhouse units on Lot A at 279 Suffolk Avenue.
Good evening, everybody.
Good evening. Do you wish to add anything to your, or it speaks for itself?
It speaks for itself. I mean, I can give you an explanation if, you know, when we started the project, it was right in the beginning of COVID. We had some benchmarks set up. We had very slight tolerances because we were building into the hill, so we were trying to put the house like right on the money. The engineer that we have unfortunately is a 75-year-old man and at that time was unable to come out and give us our dead exact measurements. We thought we hit them, you know, where we needed to. Unfortunately, two, you know, on two separate buildings, two separate driveways just were slightly off.
Okay, I'm seeing that this is a public hearing. Are there any proponents, anyone in favor? Tony, do you wish to speak even though you don't have, there you go. You gotta mute on, you're muted.
I'll look for that yellow hand, Chairman, Mr. Chairman. I'll let the Ward Counselor speak before me and then I'll speak.
Thank you, Mr. President, and thank you, Mr. Chairman. You know, I'm just gonna speak on the, what I, what I saw with my own eyes. I'm not gonna sit there and say I celebrate that this happened, and I would imagine the developer is probably a little embarrassed that, I mean, literally it's off by a few inches when, on the slope of the driveway leaving. So I went and looked at it myself. I'm not an engineer, and I would have never known until I saw this meeting. So, you know, the lot, I just look at it and say like, you know, from a realist standpoint, should he rip up the driveways? I think it's two of the three. Should he rip them up and redo them? Or, you know, you're talking over the course of the slope, probably two inches, and Mike, Mr. Tucker, you probably know more than me on this. But rather than that, rather than that, I'd rather see some goodwill towards the neighborhood. Also, there is another project that he's developing next door. And, you know, quite frankly, I know that there's an interest in doing more than, you know, potentially is allowed. And, you know, the answer that we've kind of discussed is basically, you know, why don't you just what you can in there and not try and do much more, obviously do it by right. And I think that the developer seems more willing with that, and I think that that's gonna bode well for the neighborhood. So it's one of those, do we have them rip up the driveway for, you know, all, and then disrupt the neighborhood some more? And just to put it back in. And for something you really, the layman, the common eye really can't tell or see. I couldn't, but I was surprised we even had this ordinance, but anyway. So I would err on the, my opinion would be, you know, let it, let it be. And hopes that, again, buying goodwill with the neighborhood and also knowing that his next, the last of the three properties being built would be built in a single family and, and everyone will be happy and move on.
Okay, thank you. Are there any other proponents? Tony?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I.
Counselor President Zambudo.
I visited the site today, and I agree with my colleague from Lot 4. I happen to, you know, I was in construction for many years, more than I want to admit. And I wouldn't have, you know, if I wasn't told that it was off slightly, I wouldn't have known it. I think it would be more disruptive to tear it up for the neighborhood, and I agree with my colleague. And so, and I also like the goodwill part of the rest of the story. So I think all in all, everybody would be pleased in the end, and there'll be less disruption for tearing up, but I don't know if it's an inch and a half or whatever the distance is over the driveway, but it's, it's minimal. So I'm, I'm in support of this variance. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other proponents?
Mr. Tucker, Council Morabito would like to be recorded as a proponent for this application.
Okay. Are there any other proponents? Hearing and seeing none, I'll close that side of the hearing. Are there any opponents?
There is one for some of the hand raised. Yes.
Okay, I believe it's Chris you're allowed to speak.
Hi, everyone.
Please state your name and address for the record.
Sure, Chris Ikellar, 282 Suffolk Ave. I guess I don't wanna say that I'm, you know, not, I'm not interested in having him rip up a driveway for a matter of one degree, if that's what it is. I don't know what the slope is. But I do take exception to the thought that is this a quid quo where there is goodwill? Cuz there really hasn't been any goodwill, frankly, and as far as counselors coming up here, I sent notes, I never heard from Morabito or anyone regarding the issues that have been, we've been faced with up here. It's not been easy. There's been water mitigation problems with mud and water running into not just my yard, but all my neighbors' yards. And I think that all of that frankly could have been, with any sort of help from the city in terms of water mitigation could have, could have helped a lot. Everything was allowed to just go without any real, I would say deference to the neighborhood. And now suddenly we're talking about, oh, let's make it okay for the neighborhood. So, I mean, I'm not interested in having them rip up driveways just for the sake of ripping it up for one degree. But we still have a lot that is yet to be developed. It's unsightly. It really looks like a dumping ground. The mud is running down the road, and, but I guess that's okay. So I'm not an opponent, but I just wanted to state some of the issues that have been going on up here. I understand that mistakes happen. You know, I guess luckily it isn't the whole house that was, was off and it was only a driveway, but, you know, I think all the neighbors feel very similar to the way I do. Thank you.
Thank you. Being the Board of Appeals, we have no jurisdiction in the comments that you stated. I would suggest that you do speak with the Counselor and perhaps the Department of Public Works. Are there any other opponents?
Mr. Tucker, if, Mr. Chairman, and Chris, it's good to hear from you. And I hope you understand, I mean, I know that you know I've been up there a number of times, and I understand your concerns, you know. When you're living across the street from a, you know, fairly large construction site, it's, it can be, it can be uncomfortable. And, you know, we've had a lot of conversations with the developer, and some of them have been friendly and some of them haven't been, been less friendly. And so I am like, I'm not up here cheerleading for anyone. And certainly, and I know what you're saying, certainly not a quid pro quo, but certainly I'm not one to try and play hardball with certain people unless I felt like you need the need to. But, you know, when it comes to the next property with a little more involvement, you know, certainly we're gonna have a little more strength. That being said, yes, there were, there were departments in the city and things like that that needed to be more involved in what was going on during the building phase of that property. I made calls and weekly to get people up there to make sure that things are being done well. I'm not a construction person. I'm not, you know, I know, I know most of our zoning and ordinances, but, you know, I don't know how to direct certain things. Some of the support, you know, maybe during COVID and maybe during the time that we, things were going on. And I totally agree, so I understand your frustration and I apologize.
Okay, are there any other proponents? Hearing none. Are there any members that wish to speak?
Yeah, I was there also this morning. I know Patrick was there, Mr. Zambudo. We could have got together for lunch.
I did take, I did. I did tour the property, and my one concern was more towards the, if you're facing the property, was towards the right. And it was a, it's kind of complex because he has to tie into an existing sidewalk there and keep that height. So that was something that I took into consideration cuz that's the one driveway that I would think that is the slope concern, if any. That, that, you know, that I, I couldn't tell that the other driveway that there was any problems. That one there, I think the developer did have some concern with the way he had to, to make that sidewalk going to the, right to the abutter next to that on the right. So I, that was my only thing, and I, I got an answer on it, so I'm very happy with, that someone answered me. Any other members? Then I'd ask for a roll call.
Mr. Tucker, there is an attendee who, who has her hand raised.
Oh, okay. Ms. Joyce, Joyce, if you unmute yourself, you're all set to speak.
Mute, here we go. All right.
Thank you.
This is on my computer, but Betty Delagro would like to say something.
Just her address, please.
288 Suffolk Avenue.
Thank you very much.
The construction so far has not been easy. It's been hard. It's been constant mess on our street. It's caused nothing but disruption. And if the upcoming.
Not to cut you short, ma'am, but the Board of Appeals really has no jurisdiction over any of the construction. I would think that you'd have to take that up with the, the city. Actually, we're just here for that, the variance and the slope of the driveway.
Okay, this is Joyce Delagro speaking. Let me ask you a question. Is it our, is it our duty to tell, to say okay or not okay about the variance? We don't know about slopes. We don't know if the rainwater on the driveways, cuz I looked at them today. They do kind of go up very high, and where the rainwater comes down, is it gonna fall in the street, come across to us again? I mean, we've had this problem right along, so now you got the driveways already adding to the mess that's gonna happen. I mean, is there any, where's the runoff gonna go? Is it gonna go in the street? Are we gonna have puddles? Because you should come up and take a look and see for yourself.
As I stated, and as the other members stated, we did come up there and take a look.
Well, maybe when it rains, you should come up, cuz that's probably what you're gonna see. You're not gonna see it when it's clear out and it's nice out and all that stuff. But when it rains, the mud comes across the street. I know there's no mud on the driveways cuz it's already done. But where's that rain gonna go? Is it gonna fall down the driveway into the street? And then come across, are we gonna have puddles over there? Is that grade gonna make that much of a difference or not? I mean, I don't know. How do I know?
It's a very, very minimal grade. It should make no, it should make no difference as far as the water coming down off the sidewalk there. It, it's very, very minimal.
Yeah, well, we've heard a lot of stories before. All right, well, I guess that's the end of that story.
Well, thank you for participating.
Well, it's been awful, so thank you.
I mean, may I say something?
Sure.
If it has to do with this, with this, with the driveway.
Well, it does have something to do with the drivers. I mean, so we, we did install and we had to move the. Well, it does have something to do with the drivers. I mean, so we did install and we had to move the catch basin over and it's, you know, it's tight up against our granite curbing. It's in the gutter where it belongs. I mean, the street is pitching over. I mean, yeah, during construction, the drain wasn't working correctly because we had to cover it due to the construction because we couldn't have mud. Even though we tried putting the silk blankets in there, we were rerouting water. Now that the granite, the sidewalks are in.
Yep.
The water is mitigated and has, is working the way it's supposed to be working, traveling into the gutter and into the drains. You know, unfortunately sidewalks didn't get built to the very end of the project. And that's why.
We had to deal with that. I got it. We had to deal with the mess because.
Lot of runoff than they would have liked to.
Yeah, yeah.
Thank you. Can we take a roll call, Mike, on this? Hey, roll call, please.
Roll call to grant the relief requested. Mr. Bucili. Bucili voting yes. Mr. Lemonna. Voting yes, Mr. Lopes.
Yes.
Voting yes, Mr. Pelton.
Yes.
Voting yes, Mr. Tucker.
Yes.
Yes, this variance shall be granted.
Thank you very much, everyone.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda, very similar application to the previous, A21-04, Piscuali, Worsino, with respect to seeking a variance with respect to maximum grade requirement of 8% for unenclosed parking areas to enable the appellant to exceed an 8% as-built slope of a completed driveway in connection with construction of two townhouse units on Lot B at 287 Suffolk Ave, Revere, Mass.
Okay, the applicant, it's basically the same as the other. I will ask if there's any proponents. And I would think that the proponents are the same as the, based on the last calendar item number 2103. Seeing, Anthony, if you wish to speak, you have your hand raised there?
I do. Obviously, I have the same comments I had before and, you know, it's, this one's even more minimal of a difference than the last one. So I appreciate the concerns of the neighborhood, but I think he answered the question correctly that now that the drainage is up and running, it should be no problem. And the amount of, the amount of difference from being perfect to what it is, would not cause any runoff problems. So I'm in favor of this and I support it. Thank you.
Any other proponents? Hearing none. I'll close that side. Hearing any opponents? Hearing none. I'll close that side. Hearing any members? I just asked for a roll call.
Roll call to grant the relief requested. Mr. Bucili. Mr. Bucili voting yes. Mr. Lemonna.
Yes.
Voting yes, Mr. Lopes.
Yes.
Voting yes, Mr. Pelton.
Yes.
Voting yes, Mr. Tucker.
Yes.
Voting yes, this variance shall be granted.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Next application is A2105, the application of Anthony Cacciola Jr., Cambridge, Mass, requesting a variance with respect to parking in the front yard to enable the appellant to construct a single-family dwelling at 191 Endicott Ave.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Members of the board, for the record, my name is Rick Salvo with Engineering Alliance. A civil engineer with offices at 194 Central Street in Saugus. With your permission, Mr. Chairman, is okay if I share my screen?
Yes.
So this particular property is located on 191 Endicott Avenue. It's a vacant lot. As you could see in the existing conditions survey, it's comprised of about 5,000 square feet. It's also known as tax black, tax map one, block 43, Lot 4. Put it into perspective, here it is, Endicott Street, Winthrop Avenue. Mr. Caciolo owns this lot. He also owns the multifamily that's behind it. And he plans to construct a single-family dwelling on it for his son. This is a picture of the lot, what it looks like. As the board probably knows, many of these lots, the houses are set back pretty far from the street because of the extreme topography that exists at the front of these properties. The proposal is, I get the wrong plan here, excuse me. Just open up the right. I apologize. The proposal is to construct a single-family house. It's a pretty modest, single-family house. Has a footprint of about 934 square feet. The house itself is completely conforming. And we're here tonight to request relief from 17.24.070A1 to allow parking in the front yard setback. So you are proposing two parking spaces here in the front yard setback with a three-sided retaining wall around it, which is pretty similar to other houses in the neighborhood, as you could see in this photo. We're not proposing garages in front of this dwelling. We're proposing to be something more like this for two cars. It would be 18 feet wide by 18 feet deep and pretty modest. The reason why we're requesting this variance is if we put the parking in the side yard as the zoning would require, as you can imagine, it would create quite a bit of disturbance to the abutting properties. By building it in the middle of the lot over here, we're able to accomplish the parking, the required parking on site with as little impact as possible to the abutting properties. Again, it's a single-family dwelling. This particular lot sort of meets all the requirements in terms of lot shape, topography and soil conditions, which is why we're not proposing traditional parking as we would in a single-family dwelling if this was a completely flat lot. I've got the owner's representative, Mr. Fahy, on the line as well, who's joining us with us, who will be the general contractor. And I think at this point, we'd be happy to turn it over to the board to answer any questions or comments you might have.
Seeing that it's a public hearing, I will ask if there's any, could you unshare this for a second?
I sure can.
I will ask if there's any proponents? I know that the ward counselor is here. Do you wish to speak now or wait till opponents and proponents?
I don't have any problem with the, the single-family house. The only thing is, this is, you know, I heard about this through a neighbor. It would have been respectful for the developer or the owner of the property to call me and just let me know what was going on in my ward. And there was no contact, no calls, nothing. So this, and Chairman Tucker, you're the one who called me, you know, a couple of days ago and asked me to be on Zoom to, you know, view this. So I'm just a little bit upset that I didn't even get a call just to say, well, we're going to do this, we're going to do that. I didn't even know a house was going to go on there. So I just, I'm just asking for respect as the ward council, if, when you're going forward, just to let me know.
I apologize, but you and I had a telephone conversation about this a little while ago. Maybe you didn't realize it was this particular address.
Probably, probably.
But you and I, this is, that was the reason why I called you, I don't know, about three or four weeks ago.
Okay. I guess I didn't realize that it was this property. So.
Okay.
I have no problems with it, though. No problem.
Are there any other proponents? Seeing and hearing none. I'll close that side of the hearing. Are there any opponents? Anyone opposed? Seeing and hearing none. I'll close that side of the hearing. Any members wish to speak?
I live in the area, Mike, and I drove by when I spoke with Joanne earlier. It's fine with me because it's very common on that street to have parking in this way. I'm okay with it.
Okay. The only thing that I have a question on is the typical spaces are nine by 18. Why wouldn't you go back farther with the retaining wall so that, because if they were to get a pickup truck, for example, they'd be right on the curb, the curb line, with the typical pickup trucks now being nine, almost nine feet long. If you have a trailer hitch, then it's a little bit even longer. So I, I believe the one down on the left there, a couple of spaces, a couple of homes down on the left, it is in, it is deeper.
Yeah, I mean, we don't have a problem making it a few feet deeper if, you know, concerned. I mean, obviously, 18 feet starts behind the, behind the back edge of sidewalk, but we could push it in, you know, another foot or two to, to adjust for that if you like.
Okay, I was just more concerned with the depth, but. I don't, I'm not, it is something that you could do even to put it in a couple of more feet?
Yeah, we could certainly put it in a couple of, I was just trying to minimize it as much as possible, but not a problem. Like another two or three feet wouldn't make a bit of difference.
All righty. John, where you live down there, it may not even have to be. What do you feel, John? Because you're down.
No, that's an excellent point, Mike, and I was going to say that to you because a lot of the cars on that street that have this parking situation stick out onto the sidewalk.
Not deep enough. Right.
All right. So if you could take that into consideration, then that's my only concern with that one thing. I know you're going to have a lot of work there because the slope and the excavating and putting up retaining walls.
Yeah, like I said, we're not anticipating much for the house. It'll be up on the flat, but the parking spaces will be where all the work will come from, for sure.
All righty. And you would be presenting this to the plans of the site plan review anyways?
Yep. Yeah, we already did, obviously, for the denial, but we'll be going back to them for the.
You would have to go back to them. Okay, I would just ask for a roll call there. And if we can, so the motion to approve is, how many, what would you push it back to?
Why don't we make them 20 feet deep instead of 18 feet?
Beautiful. So Ashley, that's the only thing they're going to make the.
Yes, as a condition, the parking spaces are going to be nine, nine by 20.
Well, the retaining wall will go back to 20 feet.
Correct.
Allowing for 20 feet for a vehicle, but yes, that's.
Okay. Yep.
And I'll ask for a roll call.
Sure. Shall the zoning board of appeals grant the relief requested, subject to the condition that the retaining wall be set back 20 feet? Mr. Bucili. Voting yes. Mr. Lemonna.
Yes.
Voting yes, Mr. Lopes.
Yes.
Voting yes, Mr. Pelton.
Yes.
Yes, Mr. Tucker.
Yes.
Voting yes, the variance shall be granted.
I thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Next application is A2106, Najib Badar and Sundis Badar of 38 Grover Street, seeking variances for minimum front and rear yard setbacks to enable the appellant to construct multiple additions in a front porch on an existing single-family dwelling.
Okay, I believe the application speaks for itself. I do see that the owners are in the audience here. If you wish to speak, you may do so, but the plan really speaks for itself. And I thank you for the opportunity for letting me tour the property.
Of course. Hi, my name is Najib. I have my wife here with me. We're joined by Eileen Rosa, who's our architect and designer. And yes, Mr. Tucker, you were here. I explained to you the project. We're requesting for two variances in the front yard setback and the rear yard setback. We've been living here for almost 13 years now and would like to continue living here just with the kids growing and taking care of my parents. We just need a little bit extra room in the house so everybody can have their own space. And I want to thank Mr. Sereno for hanging on to the meeting for such a long time because I did speak to him as well and explain to him the project.
Thank you. Rich, do you want me to go with the proponents and opponents and then give you the opportunity?
Yes, that would be great. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Are there any other proponents? I don't see any hand raised. We do have a lot of letters that were on file, actually, with this applicant.
We spoke to all our neighbors. Everybody signed off. And then the neighbor that you had mentioned when you were over, I had her over yesterday. Rita is her name and explained to her the whole project. She was very supportive.
Thank you. Now, it was your director for the, to the, to the rear.
To the side. Yep.
To the left side. Yeah.
Yep. Yes, sir.
All righty. Seeing and hearing no opponents, there's no hand raised. I would ask if there's any members or, Rich, if you want to speak?
Yes, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm actually really excited to speak on this one. Out of all the projects that I have spoken to you guys about over the past year, this is the one that I truly am most supportive of. You know, this, when we talk about variances, this is why we have variances on the books. And this is why a zoning board of appeals exists, to grant variances to families like Najib's. Najib and his family are just looking to expand their house because their family is growing. And I think, you know, they're not, you know, they're not selling the house. They're doing it so they can stay in Revere. We want to keep larger families that are growing in Revere. And I'm actually, I'm so thankful that instead of selling and trying to move into a bigger house, that they're going to be putting an addition on their house. So I am 100% in support of this and I hope you guys will be too. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Are there any members that wish to speak? Again, I thank you for the opportunity for letting me take so much of your time because I did want to, I had a concern and I brought it to Frank Strindy's attention and he was very, no concern at all. I actually learned something as far as that little jog out in the back. You are allowed to go higher and that was my only concern and that was, it's totally legit, no problems at all.
Thank you very much.
So I'd ask for a roll call.
Sure. Shall the zoning board of appeals grant the relief requested? Mr. Bucili. Mr. Bucili voting yes. Mr. Lemonna.
Yes.
Mr. Lemonna voting yes. Mr. Lopes.
Yes.
Voting yes, Mr. Pelton.
Yes.
Voting yes, and Mr. Tucker.
Yes.
Voting yes, the variance shall be granted. There's no further business, Chairman.
Thank you, everyone. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Further business, our next meeting will be February 24th at 5:00 PM. Thank you and have a good night.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you all.
Hey, Al, you're all set.
Thank you.
Have a good night. Okay.
Tony, congratulations, Council, Chairman, President.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I appreciate that.